Okay, but it sounds like we're getting ready to eat. We're almost ready. Okay, we want to welcome everybody to the regular call city council meeting for October 1st, 2019. Called meeting to order. If you'll stand and tell if you'd like to sit.
Let's pray. Well, we just thank you for this beautiful day that you've given us, Lord, and all your many blessings that you bestowed on us. We just thank you for the opportunity to meet tonight and thank, we thank all those that's in attendance tonight. We've got a full house. Well, I pray for our leaders tonight that they will have the wisdom and knowledge they need to make the decisions that affect our city not only today, but in the future. But we just love you, forgive us where we fail you. In your name I pray. Amen.
Place the flag, place your hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clear call, please.
Here.
Here.
Here, Chris Corral.
Here.
Tick Bryan.
Here.
Jenny Lynn Britman, absent mayor. Do you have the quorum?
Thank you. Okay, we have one set of minutes from September 17th. Entertained, we have motion to second any discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. At this time, we have communication from the citizens. If anyone would like to address the council on any subject, you have three minutes to tell us what you want to say. Speak to the council, do not address the audience, step up to the podium and state your name and address. So if anyone would like to speak at this time, you're welcome to come forward.
Derek Dodson, 106 Chapman Drive, Saturday's Lebanon Democrat, page two, Lebanon Earns Awards, a Greater National Regional Council event. Here's one that was one for compatibility of development planning. I won't get into all that, but it's for the town square. This right here are the minutes from the August Lebanon Planning Commission with regard to 413 Maple Hill Road. And as is usually the case, in a rezoning that I speak on before the Lebanon Planning Commission, I can discuss the significant issues regarding a rezoning, but Mayor Asher, planning commission does not. So I'll come back to that in a second. City council minutes, last city council meeting, same rezoning. Once again, I can discuss the serious issues with regard to rezoning, city council does not. In both cases, the 413 Maple Hill Road rezoning was based on the Future Land Use Plan. Well, the Future Land Use Plan is riddled with miscodings, which are in essence fraud. That's not necessarily quite the case in this case of 1413 Maple. But what's obviously happens, happened here is someone, once again, has gone back into the Future Land Use Plan and come back behind and miscoded it because there is no way that this property in a two-acre lot neighborhood with a house sitting in front of the acreage behind it, there's no way someone knew when the Future Land Use Plan was developed to go in next to John, off Maple Hill Road, John Galt Drive, whatever the name of it is, and on this tiny piece of property, go in and zone it in the Future Land Use Plan, the five to eight houses per acre behind the current homes that live there on half-acre lots. There's no way that happened. Somebody's gone back in there and changed this. This isn't the first time. These people are being defrauded. There's no way. So the city's Future Land Use Plan already is riddled with fraud, of miscodings that someone did not find. Councilman Bryan's neighborhood is one of the neighborhoods that's miscoded. It's not the only one. And then here we are with this nonsense. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, come to the podium.
My name's Cindy Foster and I live at 1617 Ponderosa Trail. I'm also wanting to speak on behalf of the 413 Maple Hill Road rezoning. I live adjacent to the house that's on 413 Maple Hill Road. My land backs up to their land. And if all this happens, that they're going to build little tiny houses, rental houses on that property, I mean, it's going to ruin our property value. And I'd just like to look at each one of you and ask you, would you want that to be done right behind your home? Where it's going to ruin the property value? You know, I'm very upset about this and, yes, on half-acre lots is what it is. And they're going to build rental property back there. It's going to ruin our property value on the houses on our road. And I beg you to please not vote for this change.
Paul, can you address that issue?
You know, the applicant has made the request to rezone it. We entertained those. It is currently zone RS 20. They're asking to go to RD 9, which does fit with the Chaparral subdivision and the Future Land Use Plan.
How many houses are they going to put on there?
We have not seen a drawing for it. The RD 9 zoning district would allow for single-family homes and duplexes. If I do the math, they could theoretically get as high as 20 houses, 21 maybe. But with single-family homes and duplexes, it's almost impossible to maximize it. So it's going to be under that.
You don't own the...
But we don't know how many.
It's not per lot, but per...
No, that's with the three, it's about three acres.
Oh, okay. About 20 houses on three acres.
Right.
Yeah, well, these houses conform to the houses that are already out there.
Well, we don't have design standards for single-family homes or for duplexes. So, and we haven't seen any site plan. You know, it's possible that they just want to put one duplex on there or two single-family homes. We don't know yet. We haven't seen a drawing.
They were waiting for the density report from somebody, from engineer or something. Is that correct?
Well, they may be. We have not drawn it out, like I haven't drawn out, see how many they could fit. But if I were them, I'd do the due diligence and figure out how many before I got too far in the process.
Well, I'll speak on this when it's my turn to speak, okay? I have some information you'll want to hear and it's good information. It's not the hearsay and other false information you've been hearing, okay? This is fact, what I'll be telling you.
Just to clarify, you're not suggesting that anything I said is false information, are you?
Has he already spoken?
Yes.
Well, he needs to sit down.
I just want to clarify that.
Think you're out of...
Could I get a clarification?
You can sit down.
Can I?
I'll take over here.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Marie Johnson and I live on Ponderosa Trail. Our property backs up to this and some of the other neighbors are here. Our property backs up to the wooded area. And we know the neighbors that are selling and we wish them well with the sale. But our objection is the density of the property we're hearing is going to be divided, share numbers. And we would just like to see permanent homes or permanent condos, anything but rental property. Most of us are elderly right in that neighborhood. Cindy's probably the youngest one around that just spoke. And the density with all the children in rental properties can be a problem for most of us. And that's our big concern, just the type of buildings that we've heard they want to build. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on any subject? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Darla Burns and I live at 919 Canyon Creek. And I agree with the gentleman and the lady. I bought our house eight years ago, me and my husband, and we would like to keep it the way it is down there. We just don't want any more rental properties, like I agree with her and the gentleman. So that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on any subject? Mr. Dunn.
I really didn't want to say anything. But my name is Jim Dunn. I live on Marwood Drive over, not too far from here. But every meeting we go to is covered up with all sorts of people that want to change zoning. And we got a Future Land Use Plan and we had some kind of map that I found out wasn't official or anything like that. But we used it for some reason. And someone like, I was looking to see what these people were, it's an LLC. And that's usually the thing now that indicates that we don't want nobody to know the way they want building there. That's usually what that's for. But can't you, you gotta just table this thing until you find out what they want to build there? Rather than just approving them, do anything they want to do upfront? Because that'd be an idea that we might possess sometime. We just go down through this whole page and approve all these things. We have no idea who's building this thing, what it's going to look like, or what it's going to do to anybody. And that's my only problem I got with all this. And they're building on a little country road that used to be wagons on and it messes up all the traffic. So, you know, that's the way I feel about it. I'd like to know what people are building, what it's going to look like, how it's going to destroy everything else before. We just, we just across the board give everybody what they want to do as long as they're an LLC or something. I just might be something to look at. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir, come forward.
My name is Carl Rose. I live at 1611 Ponderosa Trail, Hattick. Couple of weeks ago, I spoke to Mr. Harrison, I believe he's at the planning commission. And he told me that the speculator developer, and I use those terms advisedly, is going to put 11 duplexes or 12 single-family homes on three acres. And to me, that's unacceptable. If the speculator developer would revise his site plan and put decent single-family homes so that our neighbors would be compatible with us and the buildings would blend in with the neighborhood, I don't think you would have a gripe from anybody. Thank you very much for listening.
Anyone else like to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Lori Hicks, 116 South Tarver. First of all, I'd just like to say to these lovely people over here, I really hope you look, they're part of the greatest generation and they really deserve your compassion and your thoughts. I'm here tonight specifically to speak about the Mitchell House and the $250,000 that's being proposed to spend on renovation and repairs. Mayor, I just have a question for you for the record. Are you aware of any additional monies that will be needed for repair or restoration of the Mitchell House beyond what is listed here in this $246,793 expenditure?
No, ma'am, I'm not.
Okay.
And that's, that is not additional money. The cost for the Mitchell House and the $250,000 has already been budgeted.
Right, I realize that. Okay. The reason I'm asking this is because I've been told by reliable sources, multiple, that the estimated cost proposed by Stockton to the city for the Mitchell House is in the neighborhood of three-quarters of a million dollars. So I have to ask you where you think you're going to get the other half a million dollars? Now, I requested a copy of the bid proposal package that you sent out as well as what Stockton sent to you with their bid, and I was unable to see that yesterday. Jeff Baines and I just couldn't match our schedule. So we're meeting Thursday to go over that. But I, I have to say, when I made a copy of the summary of work that was provided to the public as part of tonight's meeting agenda, I mean, this stretches the bounds of credibility. You have line item upon line item with no costs in it. All you have is a big number at the bottom. This tells us absolutely nothing. So for example, last week I witnessed Cincy employees cutting down a tree on the east side of the mansion. I later passed them in a city truck on Main Street in Hartman where they were hauling it away. So if the city employees are trimming the trees and taking care of that, why are we having restore landscaping and tree trimming in this particular proposal? Also too, this flat roof critical repairs. I've done two flat roofs on historic homes. They were both a nightmare. Between the underlayment, the wet joists, they were rotted. If you had insulation, that is even worse. If you have black mold, you've really got problems. What is, what are you doing for that in terms of when that kind of stuff happens, it's going to exceed this budget? And you're very clifty as it is. I was astounded to see that when they gave you, I guess, the price that no one knows on inspecting windows and glazing, how many windows are we talking about? Why was this not inspected as part of the bid proposal? I've done two complete renovations of homes and when I had a contractor, this was possible. So Mayor, I'm saying to you is if no is your answer, you're going to have to answer the voters in 2020 if you come up with more money.
Yes, ma'am, we're going, we're going.
Before we take the next speaker, Mike, would you come up? Mike is the architect who did renovations for Cracker Barrel and he also inspected the building for us and helped with this budget.
Greetings, council. Michael Manis, I'm president of Manis Design here in town. As the mayor indicated, I was the original architect that helped Cracker Barrel in 1997 restore the house. And to the point about the overall cost of the package that was put together, our mission, the instructions we were given were to go to the property, inside, outside, furnishings, equipment, and make a list of everything that we could possibly think of that the city might want to do with the property. The process then, of course, as the young lady pointed out, we got an overall number that was well above the amount of money that the city had budgeted, that you guys had budgeted to spend. So we worked with representatives of the city, Public Works, and our contractor to identify, first, the safety issues that we knew we needed to correct, second, any kind of ADA issues, and then essentially a wish list of everything else that we want to try and get done inside and outside of the building. So that was the process that we went through. Again, it was, our direction was to identify everything that we could possibly want to do to improve the project, knowing that it was going to have to be a shopping list and that we wouldn't be able to essentially afford everything that we wanted to. I would be happy to take individual questions, but I'll try just from memory what she had indicated. The windows in that building, in 97, we purchased and had custom-made, brand-new replacement windows for all of the windows on the upper level of the building, which are still in amazing shape. And the few windows that the young lady was referring to have to do with the old windows that were left over from 1910, from the original construction. We were just making sure that there was no rot and repair that needed to be done there. There's only a few windows that were not repaired in 97 that are showing signs of degradation. The low-slope critical repairs are the three porches, four porches, excuse me. Of course, we got the main porch and then two portages on each side, or one portage and another porch. They're still in really good shape. There are a couple of the edge trims and a couple of the gutters and downspouts are leaking. That's what the roof, critical repairs are. And then we are putting a coating, those roofs are a rubber roof, if you will, and we're putting an elastomeric coating over those to ensure longevity for another 10 to 15 to 20 years on those sections there. Again, Mayor, we happen to answer any particular question that I didn't cover on that.
Would anybody like to ask Mike a question about the Mitchell House?
Mike, what was the total amount of everything that you had to go through to kind of get it down to the critical items?
I don't have that number. I mean, the bid was around, again, everything included was around 750, something like that. That was, again, furniture, trying to restore furniture, artwork. Just anything we could think of that the city might want to do is what we tried to put on the list to give them a number. Again, where the team could look and say, these are the most critical things that we got to do to operate. Honestly, if we were to go down there and repair a few rails and do some ADA upgrades, we could move into the building tomorrow. I mean, it's in really, really solid shape. Cracker Barrel, of course, spared no expense restoring the mansion. The tree trimming thing that we talked about, Cracker Barrel spent a tremendous amount of money on the ornamental landscape of that project. Obviously, it's now 20 years old. Some of the material has not performed well, some of it's dead. So there is some tree trimming. We're going to, the trees that have not been taken out now, we do have our landscape contractor that will go in, taking out all the dead limbs, what we call limbing them up. Again, trying to restore the views back into the property. Yes, ma'am.
So they brought up another question. You say that it's ready to go except for just these few items. So we were told when this passed that it was moving ready, that the IT guy said all you had to do was plug in the phones and... So why an unknown amount of money for duplex receptacles, CTV outlets, electrical data changes?
Well, we wanted to put a TV in the mayor's office where he could watch the news and be on top of things. The legal conference room upstairs, rather than having a courtroom across the floor like we have here. Trip hazard, we thought we would get those in the floor. So yes, ma'am, there are a few minor electrical changes. Very minor things. Yes, ma'am.
I could make a couple of comments too. As most of you may know, any kind of construction work that you do today is going to cost you harm or lay because everybody's working. It's hard to get anybody and if you do, the price goes up. We put this out for bid, like we do everything, we got one bid. In case we, the price may be a little bit higher. I think we were all shocked when the price came back. I think we thought that the first list we had would come in 250 or under, and it did not. But like Mike said, we were, most of it was a wish list, things we'd like to see done. And eventually 10 years from now, it may get done. But it is reasonably ready to go. One other comment, we have solved two problems by purchasing the Mitchell House. From the last administration, and maybe even further back, the last administration, we've all realized that there is overcrowding in this building. When Mayor Fox decided to redo this particular building, he stated in the paper that it would probably take care of the city for the next 20 years. And it's been 23 years. And our engineering and planning department on the third floor are extremely crowded. There's nobody that's seen it, has questioned that. We solved that problem. We also preserved the Mitchell House, which is a historic building to this area. And if you're not from around here, you probably don't understand that. But just like this building was saved to preserve the history of Lebanon, the Mitchell House is now being saved to also help preserve the history of Lebanon. Now next, we've looked at other options and some good options.
Tell us what other options.
That's what I was getting ready to do. Okay, thank you. We looked at another building. We looked at it very seriously. It's a good building. It's a good deal of time. But it was $1.8 million was the asking price, reasonable price for that building. And probably $800,000 to $900,000 to fix it up. By spending the $1.4 million on the Mitchell House over other options, we're going to save $1.3 million. I think that's worthwhile for the city of Lebanon. So those are the reasons that we're doing what we're doing. Okay? Any other questions for Mike?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, anyone else like to speak on any subject? Yes, sir.
Sean Hicks, 116 South Tarver Road. Concerning the Mitchell House, over the course, over the course since last May, the mayor said many different quotes, not only in the meetings but also in the newspaper, saying the city's been looking to expand the city hall for several years. When the opportunity came up, we saw, you know, presented itself, we saw a chance to solve our overcrowding and save at least $1.4 million, right? So these other planned solutions were never presented in an open meeting that I'm aware of, because I'm at most of the meetings. They weren't presented for review, for voting, who decided what options were to be presented, or they discussed that potentially in an illegal meeting. And how will the nine people, nine people being moved into the Mitchell House really solve our overcrowding or accommodate future growth for the city? Nine people are moving into a 10,600-square-foot mansion.
That's incorrect, sir.
Well, so I'm...
Anybody know?
Nobody knows. So the engineering and planning department, which are packed in like sardines, according to the city directory, has 11 people in it. So that means that there's going to be two people still stuck out in the hallways that didn't get a chance to go to the Mitchell House. Because again, there's nine executive people going to the Mitchell House.
Not true, sir.
So if I may use my three minutes to my benefit, that would be really appreciated, Mayor.
You're 416 right now.
Okay. My favorite quote is financially, it's a good deal for us. And I want to disagree wholeheartedly with your saving $1.4 million. You're spending $1.4 million. You could have went over and leased two 12 North Castle Heights that has nine offices, one conference room, two bathrooms, 26 parking spaces, and truly saved $1.6 million, which I'll be forwarding the cost analysis to the council at the end of this meeting. About the moving ready status, we've heard plenty about that. Now, I'm all for historic preservation. And I feel if you would have came to the council and honestly said, we want to preserve the Mitchell House for the history of Lebanon, everybody would vote. It's a great way to do it. But doing it under the guise of future office growth and planning was at its base dishonest. What I can't support is your decision to relocate nine offices to the, you know, to the, as the Wilson Post said, the most palatial residence ever built inside the city limits.
That's correct.
The 41% property tax increase and the small cost of living that was given to the employees seems even more unconscionable. to the employees seems even more unconscionable with this flagrant waste of taxpayers' money. I urge the county council, the city council, to please hold the mayor to honest representations for the remainder of his hopefully one-year term, and to remember, but even though some of us may have been born at night, it certainly wasn't last night, and this will all be remembered at the ballot box. Please feel free to gavel me down, as is your pleasure.
Now, get given plenty of time. Looks like we're into the election.
Good there, sir.
Sylvia, are you here? How many people do you have upstairs?
I have eight people in my department.
Eight people?
But one of them is not. Two are sharing an office, one is at another location with police department because we don't have rooms.
That's the HR department that's going up there. Legal has two people, they're going up there. Economic development is going over there. The mayor's office and Debbie's secretary will be over there. So that's a few more than what you think.
Well, Jeff, you have to go as well.
Wilson Post said nine, so if you want to pass that forward.
Well, you can either believe the Wilson Post or you can believe the people here. There'll be more than nine people. And again, it's going to solve our overcrowding, it'll take, our planning and engineering department will have plenty of room to work now, where they are out in the hallways. Go upstairs and look, you can find them out there. So I am completely satisfied that the council and that our office has done the correct thing by solving the overcrowding problem, by saving the Mitchell House, and by saving money doing it. So I'm very proud of what the council and I have done. Okay. Anyone else like to speak on any subject? Now we have communication from the mayor. I'm going to ask that we move on a new business resolution, number nineteen-twenty-two-ninety-seven, up next. Resolution number nineteen-twenty-two-ninety-seven, honoring Pastor Argyle Faith by designing, designating the portion of Holloway Drive adjacent to Christian Life Chapel with the honorary street name of Pastor Argyle Faith Boulevard.
Motion to approve. Second?
They have motion and second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Pastor Faith was the founding pastor at Christian Life Chapel. He's passed on now, we miss him very much. Very instrumental in this community and is a pastor of faith. I would like to ask his son and wife to stand for a second, if you would. There you are. All right, have a round of applause. Now, we have some other good news and we want to get into. The Greater Nashville Regional Council this past week gave a, had their awards banquet. The city of Lebanon brought home three awards that I'm very proud of, and I want to let you know what we did tonight to win these awards. The first is the Design Guidelines for Preservation Quality and Compatible Development Award. This went to the city of Lebanon. This award celebrates two important land use initiatives undertaken by the city of Lebanon, the square Historic Preservation District, and the Developers Task Force Team. Despite being on the National Register of Historic Places, Lebanon Square was not protected from demolition or significant alteration. In 2019, the Lebanon City Council created the Square Historic Preservation District to better protect the historic character of the square. This award also recognized the Developers Task Force Team that was established by the city after years of collaboration between local government and developers. The task force presented Design Guidelines for Residential Buildings that were adopted by the city. As a result, projects in the city are designated and approved in a much more efficient manner. Paul, would you come forward, please? Our city planner had a lot to do with this. Paul, thank you so much.
It was a great honor. The square is really important, and you really do want to work hard and preserve that. It also runs up great on the divine standards for the whole community. I think you've done that. I think it's important for you guys to support the staff.
Thank you, Paul, for all you do. Our second award was for Recreation and Youth Engagement. The project is for Think Clean Youth Litter Challenge. This award honors the city's Beautification Commission Annual Youth Litter Challenge and Carnival, which educates youth as well as teachers and other adult participants about the effects litter has on the community and environment. The impact of the litter program is evident when locals and visitors drive along the roads of Lebanon and enjoy the beautiful view of a clean city. Patsy Anderson, she is the, there's Patsy, she is the chairman of our Beautification Committee, and we have the co-chair, I'm guessing. A lot of people helped with this. If you were part of the Beautification Committee, if you donated to Beautification, would you stand up just a second please? The Vietnam veterans, those are my buddies, they did, they made a big donation to Think Clean, Think Green.
And I'm going to say thank you from Leadership Wilson team.
Just wanted to recognize Pam Black, because when I first went on to the, well, went on to the Beautification Commission back in the twenty-fives, I'm not going to forgive the sign ordinance, but in two thousand eight, I chaired the commission, and Ms. Pam Black was my co-chair, and that's the year we started, Think Green, Think Clean. And we started the first year just in the city limits of Lebanon. We had so much interest that we shared it throughout the county and invited other schools. So we had six-hundred-and-ninety-eight participate this year. We gave away ten-thousand dollars in money thanks to the donations from Leadership Wilson and the veterans of Wilson County and others. And we gave ten-thousand, sent it to about five schools. Those schools take that money and go back and do a beautification or environmental project at their school. So it's a continuous cycle, and it's a win-win-win for everybody. Thank you so much.
We reactivated the Beautification Commission about three years ago, and talked to Patsy, and she's done a marvelous job. Thanks, guys. And we are on a roll, and we'll continue to do that and keep Lebanon clean and a nice place to live. The final award is for Protective Services. This is the, the project is the Joe Hayes Memorial Fire Station. This award celebrates the public-private partnership between the McCall family, Hank McCall, and the city of Lebanon to create the Hayes Memorial Fire Station. The fire station, which was completed in August twenty-eighteen, was made possible by the donation of the commercial property by the late Henry McCall and his son Hank. Named after successful businessman Joe Hayes, the fire station ensures residents are provided with timely fire and emergency protection. Joe Hayes was instrumental in getting this fire station built. Mayor Craighead was also instrumental in pushing it along as far as it is, and my administration and this council continued until it was built and active and in service right now. Now, I won't, this is the award that we received, and we're going to see that the family gets this award. So, thank you. One last, one last award, and I'll be through. And we haven't received it yet, but we, I'm going to Knoxville tomorrow to receive an award for sustainable, sustainable transportation. There we go. This is for the work that's been done on the Hamilton Springs train depot. So Lebanon is, Lebanon is going forward, is moving along very well. It's a great place to live, and we're very happy that people recognize that. Thank you. Okay, now we move into our alderman reports. Joey?
I don't have anything, Mayor, thank you.
Fred?
Regina. Are there striping people still in town?
I know that they've finished up. Normally, once they're done, the stripes are bobbled behind them, or whatever, to check the...
That's all I have there.
Thank you. Camille?
I don't have anything.
Okay, Chris?
Since me and I get all the time that has been yielded down here on the other side of the deck over here. Regina, let's talk a little bit about the construction process, Crowell Lane and Leble Pike. I know we had the pre-construction conference and wanted to sort of get an update. Had some questions about the progress there, it's now where we can see it, so that's a big positive for us.
They have all the construction there this weekend. They got construction faking and phrase, they got the utilities located, just called it if you want, called it something, local utility. The traffic control should be going, you know, for the other destruction, signage, or maybe speed limit, you know, during the construction. I don't think they have this line up yet. Didn't this weekend. The water main extension is finished, and I don't think they finished with that. Relocation is finished, and I don't think they finished with testing yet. That part is done, yeah, all along here, sitting on other banks. Our survey team is allowing park where the education community, that we make sure they get relocated, that we definitely follow. They are in progress. I think their construction date is set for June fifteenth, that's when they have the deadline to have it finished, and it's open, and they'll turn it on.
Appreciate the signs that went up, too. I know there was a flashing sign and a caution, dangerous intersection. So, well, I think we all know that that's the case, but it helps people identify that might not be familiar, they're coming into a situation there that they need to slow down for and certainly be mindful of any construction workers present in the congestion. So appreciate the good job being done by everybody, and I know Mike and his crew have been sort of monitoring the area and trying to make sure that people drive responsibly through there. The right-of-ways, I had a question earlier, right-of-ways are all been taken care of now? Do you know? Or, okay.
All those right-of-ways, we've been talking to three of them, they're still working on problems, I just talked with them all the way, everything else that you're doing, you might write in the...
Okay. Very good.
Letters went out, so all the others, we're actually here in Crowell Lane, Leble Pike, I think I've sent out about a hundred different letters, to let them know, project online, you know, with respect, they have my contact information, they have any questions, they got my email address and my phone number. So far, I've heard and advised, but we have to go start in, in the early part of construction yet.
Those of us in the areas of the city that are, you know, the whole city is growing quite a bit, but particularly in wards four and six, we're seeing a lot of that. Leble Pike's a high-traffic area, a lot of growth, houses coming in every day. So we're, I'm a big believer, and I think our council is a big believer in trying to get infrastructure upgraded as quickly as possible. It's, you know, there's a lot of money that goes into that, and we can't do it all day one, but we're working to get it done as quickly as possible, and appreciate everything our engineering staff, police, force, fire department, everybody's doing it to try to keep people safe. So, thank you.
Okay, Tick?
I want to say something about the square parking lot, it's really looking good. Talked to some folks down there, and I've never seen so many subcontractors fall in line that, like they have on the square parking lot. I was out there one day, they were paving it, the next day they were pouring the curbs, the very next day they were planting the landscaping. So they've really been working on it hard, and I really appreciate it, and it ought to be done, I would think, before, way before Halloween on the square. That, I think that's what the plan is, so it's really looking good. Yeah, I want to also comment on the hearsay and speculation and false information that maybe you've been reading or been told about this rezoning on Maple Hill Road. There's no secret to who the contractor is, it's Stuart Knowles. I don't know if you're very familiar with what his projects look like, but all over town, you can see Stuart Knowles's homes that he's built. If you go down Pennsylvania Avenue, there was a home sitting there, and that home was in real bad shape. They demolished that home and built two, two-hundred-and-fifty-plus-thousand-dollar homes right beside each other. Haven't you ever been down Pennsylvania Avenue and seen those two? And I'm starting, haven't you had your time to talk? So now it's my turn to talk. Now, if you go across from Hamilton Springs, there's two brand-new houses sitting up there right off the road. Have you seen those homes? That's Stuart Knowles. He built those homes. Stuart Knowles is contracting these homes. He told me that he's planning on building twelve to fifteen single-family homes. Fifteen-hundred to two-thousand square feet. Now, what he's waiting on is the sewer and stormwater requirements to see how many that he can actually build there. The surveyor is looking at ninety-feet-wide lots right now. The zoning allows sixty-feet-wide lots. So he's planning on having bigger lots, bigger homes, and I think I'm right when I say this, but isn't the property right across the road already zoned R-nine? So it's the same zoning as what's directly across the road. But they're going to be, I'm trying to ignore you, okay?
Tick has the floor.
I'm stating fact, I'm not stating a conspiracy theory against the city or anybody else. If you want to talk to Stuart Knowles, I can give you his number, and he'll tell you exactly the same thing. I've known Stuart my whole life. He's built nothing but quality homes in this town, and anything that he puts his name on is going to be quality, and it's going to be nice. He doesn't want to build, he lives here, this is not an out-of-town contractor coming in building things and then leaving. He lives here, and he's going to build something nice. And, you know, we need to go ahead and support this, and let's build some more nice-looking homes in town. I don't want to see duplexes built in behind my house either, you know? And I don't want you to feel, you know, to do the same thing, and he's not going to
I'm sorry, you'll be out of order.
I'll repeat.
We've already had time for, after the meeting, you're welcome to talk to...
Yeah, you can talk to me if you want to, after the meeting. But he originally told me it was twelve to fifteen homes. Now, we're not talking ranch-style homes, we're talking two-story. Go down Pennsylvania Avenue, look at those houses. That's what, that's the plan, that's what he's wanting to build.